Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the workshop for Wednesday, December 18, 2024. We're going to start off with calling the role. Ms. Tan?
Basine?
Here.
Planton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Paulson?
Present.
And Buffalo? Present. We're going to go ahead and get started. Two point zero one, Dr. Birdsong.
Good afternoon, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, staff, community members. This afternoon, the administration is prepared to share updates with you related to our school board goals, specifically goal number four. We will be discussing our math data. We have some exciting news, and of course, as always, we have great news to share, and there's still room for improvement. And we are going to work towards achieving our end-of-year goals. So without further ado, Dr. Poe, please.
Dr. Birdsong? Good afternoon, Madam Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong, community members and staff. As Dr. Birdsong said today, this afternoon, we're going to review its School Board Goal Four intermeasure two. And School Board Goal Four focuses on gap data to increase reading and math scores while decreasing gaps between specific subgroups. And specifically, measure two is looking at our mathematics data. So the first part of measure two focuses on the proficiency scores and moving students in each subgroup up the ranges where we have their for our black subgroup from forty-eight point five to sixty percent, SWD from thirty point four to forty-three, SES from fifty point one to fifty-nine, our EL from thirty-two point nine to fifty-five, and our Hispanic from fifty-eight point nine to sixty-four. And then the other table that I'll review a little bit later talks about our urgent intervention and how we want to decrease those rates for our urgent intervention. Prior to scrolling down, though, I do want to talk about I do want to talk about the change in the chart a little bit. Last board meeting, one of the questions and requests was if we could see a comparison side by side with the last fall data and this fall data. So there's a lot of green and red on the chart that I want to explain and walk through. So the spring results, because it is written under the table, but it's a lot written under the table to follow. The spring results are did we meet that goal last spring? Did we move to where we wanted to move last spring? And then the fall actual results are just a comparison from the fall of twenty-three to the fall of twenty-four data. And as you can see here, the fall-to-fall growth, we've seen growth in and I'll review this in a second more thoroughly, but in all of the tested areas, we did see a couple increases in gaps from fall to fall, but we did see some tremendous growth too from fall to fall. So what is the data showing overall with both of these charts and the graphs? And I will comment, too. I know there was also a request for a combined chart on the data, but again, due to the turnaround from Wednesday, it happened to submit it Thursday. I just couldn't get that data chart in there as well, the line graph, but I'm working on that for when we upgrade these the next time. Continuously improving, right? That's the goal.
Yes, yes.
So what does the data show? So the from the fall of twenty-three to the fall of twenty-four, all subgroups saw improvements from STAR mathematics data. All subgroups increased in scores and proficiency while decreasing in scores in the urgent intervention bands. And additionally, all gaps were reduced for the urgent intervention band except for our Hispanic subgroup, which still remains under ten percent. And then the gaps for the proficiency band all decreased except for our Hispanic and non-Hispanic, and our SES and our SWD and non-SWD gaps had a slight growth from last spring to this fall. Yes?
Do you want to?
I'm controlling it. I'm sorry. Yep. So this is the urgent interventions data right here. The fall STAR mathematics data also shows improvements from the spring twenty-four data in nearly all subgroups while reducing gaps. And this shows that the year's starting off with improved data than how we completed the year last year. So similar to when we talked about reading, not only were we seeing increased scores from fall to fall, which is the annual comparison, but where we ended the year last year to where we started this year, we're seeing improved scores, increased scores. So we're starting the year stronger than we finished the year with the STAR data, both with urgent intervention and with proficiency in almost all areas. Students in the following subgroups showed improvements from the spring twenty-twenty-four to the fall twenty-twenty-four data in both proficiency and urgent intervention while seeing the gaps move closer to ten percent. Those were students in our black subgroup, SES subgroup, EL subgroup, and our non-EL subgroup. And then what's going well? Let me scroll down to the verbal tables now where I'm actually talking through. The proficiency data, the gaps between students in the black and white, SES, the non-SES, and EL and non-EL subgroups all improved from the spring twenty-four data. So from spring to fall, which is, I think, I'll say that as many times I can, because that's great growth to see where we ended the year to where we're starting the year. Students in the following subgroup showed improvements in proficiency scores from the spring to the fall, and that was black, white, non-SWD, SES, EL, non-EL, and non-Hispanic. And then specifically within the urgent intervention data, the gaps between all student subgroups, black and white, SWD and non-SWD, SES and non-SES, EL and non-EL, saw decreases from the spring to the fall results. So they saw decreases of students in the urgent intervention group, and all students realized decreases in the percentage of students in the urgent intervention band. What's not going well, as Dr. Birdsong said earlier, you know, when she was introducing it, is there's always work to be done. There's always areas to focus on. In the proficiency data, we noticed that students in the white, SWD, non-SES, and Hispanic subgroups, they saw declines from the spring. However, from the fall, they did see scores improve. So they're not as strong as others, maybe because from spring to fall, but from fall to fall, we did see the improvement. And then urgent intervention, the gap between students in the non-Hispanic and Hispanic subgroups increased slightly, however, it's still below that ten percent range. And then we ended the term with these action steps. So the math office is about facilitating professional learning for the new twenty-twenty-three standards that are fully in effect. And they have facilitated professional learning during division-wide professional development days and provided the math specialists with replicable training to support ongoing implementation at the school level. And the math office has supported grade-level planning and engaged instructional coaching cycles to support implementation of the twenty-twenty-three standards. So they are out and about in full force. The math office will facilitate professional learning, provide instructional coaching support, and monitor the implementation of RTI-based small group instruction. They have provided administrators and teachers with expectations for small group instruction, and they've provided coaching support to teachers on small group instruction, including walkthroughs with feedback, modeling of evidence-based interventions, and creating additional resources for effective small group instruction. And more professional learning on the instructional coaching support to monitor the implementation of Zern and Edmenham, two of our online platforms. As you recall, Edmenham, this is our fourth full year of implementation, and Zern was the one the VDOE rolled out for tier-two and three support last year. The math office is supportive of this, specialists and department chairs with replicable PD, focused on the Zern and Edmenham platforms. And milestones of teacher usage, student usage, and lesson proficiency were established, and they're using data to provide strategic supports throughout the division. Also, Edmenham representatives have come and been scheduled with specific schools by the math office to support their use. And last, but definitely at least, our next steps as we look at this data and move forward, really monitoring the instruction with the alignment with the twenty-twenty-three standards, utilizing the evidence-based interventions and aligned instructional materials by conducting walkthroughs, and then offering supports following. The math office will continue to monitor implementation of Zern and Edmenham and offer professional learning throughout the year. They'll monitor implementation of small group instruction by conducting walkthroughs with feedback to determine next steps. The math office will monitor elementary math specialist support logs for implementation of coaching cycles and replicable professional learning aligned to the standards to strengthen teacher capacity. And to address the low scores in SWD and Hispanic subgroups, the math office has planned collaborations with learning support, and L's offices to create replicable professional learning for building math leaders. In addition, the collaboration will support planning for aligned differentiated instruction on division professional learning days with teachers. So that concludes the information to share with measure four point two.
Board members, you've heard the presentation. Do you have anyone have any questions? Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you, Chair Buffalo. Congratulations on the success. That's a lot of hard work, and it's wonderful to see the gaps decreasing. I know that if Ms. Campson were here, she would be very happy to see the closing of the gaps. My question really centers around thinking of the future and our teaching staff moving forward. What does the collaboration right now look like with our university partners regarding teachers who are in training to be math teachers or student teachers? What feedback are we able to give them so that way, when they do come in and help to support us? How are we preparing them for helping us accelerate our math improvements? Especially at the higher level math, like calculus and statistics and those harder-to-fill positions?
So that is a great recruitment tool. We're able to get student teachers from local universities, and I would say that all of the surrounding school divisions, we're all fighting for the same small pool of student teachers, but we're very active and aggressive. And you can speak with Dr. Agnew Scott a little bit more about that particular partnership, but they actually get classroom experience, hands-on experience, right here with our teachers, with our veteran teachers. Our veteran teachers also get paid a small stipend, but it is a stipend for taking on a cooperating teacher. So that's the best training, to sit beside a very veteran, experienced teacher who gets results. So and it's also a wonderful recruitment tool.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Ms. Basine.
I didn't know if it was on.
Well, for the presentation, so in looking at the gaps, so we're making progress, but we're still, you know, we have, it's a work in progress. We have a lot more work that we have to do. We haven't quite hit the targets that we've set. So and while we're trending for some of the subgroups in the direction that we want to see, again, going back to our students with disabilities, we're seeing a very different trend, right? So where the targets, we're seeing an increase in the gap versus what we had to see, which is the difference. And so specifically, and I'm going to keep asking this question, I know I ask it every time, around what's going well, what's not going well, but specifically, what strategies specific to what is going well, how we know, and what is not going well and how we know as it pertains to each of the subgroups? And in this case, because we are seeing that gap persist and even widen with our students with disabilities, what are we specifically doing with that particular subgroup? So I'd like to hear more about that. And going forward in these reports, I do want to see more information about that.
Sure, Ms. Basine. So one of the things that we've been focusing on is expanding work with the Will and Mary T-TAC and ODU T-TAC as well with the Strategic Instructional Model, the SIM model. We've presented that to teachers. We presented that to principals, and those are instructional activities focused specifically for supporting our students with disabilities. And how do we break the learning down more? We're continuing with professional development on specially-designed instruction to support, you know, how you're continuing to teach the standard in ways that support different learners' needs. And this year, again, we've increased the way we're collaborating centrally to where our special education coordinators and specialists meet regularly, at least monthly, if not twice a month, and some months with CNI coordinators and specialists when we're doing curriculum development, when we're talking professional development. And then furthermore, the professional development days this year are actually done in collaboration this year. So the Special Education Department and the CNI Department are collaborating on how those are done so that we can see better supports in the classroom based on the data that we saw last year.
And are you seeing that? Because I know as far as the teacher or HR reports, teachers in special, you know, who teach special education, are we making progress in filling those positions, which, you know, I'm sure we know, you know, that correlates with academic performance? Are we making any progress there or in terms of ensuring that we have the staffing necessary to teach those students?
So I would have to defer to Dr. Agnew Scott as far as the progress of the staffing, but I would like to say even with new staff that we're hiring, the professional development for them is more intense. And actually met with a team, it was a vendor team last night or yesterday afternoon about different supports they could provide specifically with new sped teachers that could be even more intense as a possibility to.
Okay, thank you. I have one last question. So you talked about milestones. Let me get to that. Like certain milestones were set around teacher usage for Zern, I think it was, and Edmentum, teacher usage, student usage, and lesson proficiency. How, like, I guess, how are you monitoring to see what, you know, what that usage, what those, in those three categories, like, what is producing the greatest results?
So this year with Zern, it's our first full year of implementation. So what we're monitoring is implementation and usage time, and we also monitor the amount of expected usage. So not just a student logged in for five minutes and they're done, but a student logged in, did the full lesson, did the twenty-minute maybe timeframe, whatever the requirement may be for that specific lesson. We meet with team members from Zern once a month to review our data by school. And then we also are able to share that with principals to say, here's what we're seeing, what we're not seeing, where we need to improve. And then as we start to get the winter data in, that's when we'll start to look at, are we seeing the results from that platform that we are expecting to see for our tier-two and tier-three interventions?
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Ms. Jordan?
All right. Good evening. So I spent hours and hours trying to figure out what my struggles have been on the monitoring of some of the data that we do, and I think I figured out some of it. So we have our overarching goal, we have a relatively smart goal. It doesn't say that we started in twenty-two, twenty-three, but I think we did. And that on the SOL piece, that we would move towards having achievement gaps decrease to be no greater than ten percent, and then also have each subgroup improve over that time period. So when we get down to the interim, at least what I think, and maybe you can correct me, I don't think we have a smart interim goal that says that from dealing with the STAR data. So if our proficient data in our gap in twenty-two, twenty-three was thirty-two point nine percent, do we have a interim goal that says what we expect it to be by twenty-six, twenty-seven or any other timeframe?
So the interim goals we do annually. So we do an annual SMART goal on the interim. The main goal has the long-term endpoint. So the interim, so here, these numbers would represent what we're doing annually for the interim right here.
Yeah.
And then here, the gap numbers are our goals for the, just for the year for the STAR data.
Yeah, and that's where it, when my light bulb went off. And so we should have a, at least based upon a progress monitoring approach, we should have a SMART goal that the board has adopted, and then the interim goals should be SMART as well. So then with a target from beginning to end, then that way, when we are monitoring our progress, you know, how we will ask the question, are we on track or not? That question is really tied to not are we on track year to year so much as are we on track towards the multi-year SMART interim goal? Because we should have some indication that if the STAR data is predictive of the SOL data, then if we know that the SOL goal is to get it down to ten percent, then what is it that the, what should the STAR data show over a same timeframe that gives us an indication whether or not we're on track based upon what the STAR data is telling us against what we are predicting that the SOL data will result? And so that's where it kind of hit me, because when we, when we're having the conversation about comparing spring to fall, I think that's fine, but it really needs to be in the broader sense of, I don't know, let's just say if it's, I don't know how many years it is, but let's just say it's three years. So if over three years, we've set a overarching goal for the gap to be ten percent for the SOLs, if we happen to have that same overarching goal for it to be ten percent for at and above on watch, then each annual target would be what it is that we have to hit in order to eventually reach that third-year goal that we've set. Then when we are monitoring our progress from year to year, it gives us an indication as to whether or not we're on track to reach the ten percent or not. And then in doing that three-year period, because we would have also annual targets, then when we're looking at fall data or winter data or spring data, or really fall and winter data, it's just giving us an indication whether or not what our students did in the fall, does it look like we're on track to reach the goals that you set for each year? Does that follow me?
I do.
Okay. So and then that ties to, because if, for example, we were to see that we were way off track, then when we talk about the allocation of resources, the progress monitoring and being able to understand where we are and whether or not strategies are producing what we need, the conversation would be around, well, you know, is the strategy correct? Does it need more resources? Are there adjustments to be made to really give us an indication whether or not in school year twenty-six, twenty-seven, we are on target or not? And so I think that one of the recommendations I would have for the administration is to revisit what the SMART, what are the SMART interim goals that are influenceable by the superintendent and are predictive of the goal that the board has set? And then the monitoring that the board is doing, trying to understand whether or not the current conditions are matching the goals or the visions that the board has set, it would give the board a better sense of where we are, and we give everybody a better sense of where we are. But I think if we stay down the current path where it seems like we are just doing it on an annual basis, it doesn't give us, and it doesn't give the board the real sense of what it is that we have to do to make sure that our students are accelerating at the rate that we need them to accelerate in order to meet the goal. And so sitting in a restaurant with two screens in front of me and the Cowboy game on, it finally, the light bulb finally went off, and I started to write this email, but I just didn't finish it. But I think that's where we've got to, for each of these goals that we're monitoring, make sure that we have SMART interim goals over the period of time so that, and I know I'm kind of repeating myself here, but just, let's just say, for example, if in order for the SOL gap by school year, by the end of school year twenty-six, twenty-seven, to be ten percent between black and white students, then does, do we think that that means that the STAR data gap for math between black and white students should be five percent by the time we get to school year twenty-six, twenty-seven? And I'm just making this up, but if that were the case, then when we see right now that in spring of twenty-three, twenty-four, just doing the black-white, because it happens to be the first one, we were at, well, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we were at thirty-two point nine percent. Then a year later, we were at twenty-eight percent, so a little bit, you know, close to a five percent change. Then if we have a target right now for twenty-four, twenty-five of nineteen percent, but historically we've seen the change being in two- to three-point range, what is it that we really have to do in order to reach that nineteen percent target for this year, considering that we came out of last year and we were at twenty-eight percent? So while I think it's good that we're able to see the growth that we're making period to period, or quarter to quarter, season to season, ultimately, what we really need to get a sense of, are we, do we feel like we are on track to reach the nineteen percent? If the nineteen percent is a good target to, say, nineteen percent in twenty-four, twenty-five, and then, I don't know what it may be, ten percent for the next year? So I was struggling and struggling, 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 struggling. But I think if we could truly see the long-range end goal for the interims, it puts the board in a better position to be able to ask the questions around, you know, budgetary impacts, resources, and so forth. Because right now, we're having the discussion, but I don't think we really know whether or not the goals that we set and the reality that we have and the resources and strategies, whether or not they're truly aligned to get us to the end goal.
So I appreciate that, Mr. Jordan. I will say the annual goals that we developed based off the STAR assessment are derived directly from the long-term goals that were developed within the actual goal. So on the actual goal, and I believe it was in the document that was shared at the July retreat.
Yeah, pulled it up.
There's a table that has annual SOL goals and gap goals.
Right.
So you'll notice on the gap goal for black and white, for the SY twenty-five is actually twenty-one percent to make the target. um, for the SY twenty-five is actually 21% to make the target on that sheet. However, here, when we looked at our, our actual data and, and saw where we were now, we challenged to go to 19%. Because the, the, the closer, the, the, the more rigorous we are on STAR, the more we're gonna make, we, we, we have confidence we'll make it with the SOL results. So, each year, we're using the data that was preset for the SOL gaps and growth to create the growth for STAR. Um, you know, I, I, I understand, I understand what you're talking about. And my only dilemma, and this is just, just me, not talking to, to the statisticians or the rest of the data team, or, or the admin team, is that, that's gonna make for a, 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 a really long SMART goal up here as, as far as how, how we're tracking everything, which is, which I understand. But we're trying to pull it so we're consistent for the data that we're, we're pulling from. So, we're still trying to focus on our ultimate goal is SOL gaps. So, that's where we're, we're, we're creating these data points from.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I follow you, I'm not su, cause I, I actually went back. I, I pulled the, the data from the retreat. I pulled, like, I have your chart that you gave us back in June. I, I pulled that, and, so I'm not quite sure I, I follow the elongated SMART goal. So, let's just say, for example, um, on the gap side, if the, if the focus, if one of the, focus, is on the gap, then, and we're dealing with the, uh, the STAR data, then, if the, if in twenty-two, twenty-three, the gap between black-white was thirty-two point nine percent, then by the spring of twenty-six, twenty-seven, we say it should be 5%. Then, at least on the gap piece, that's what it is. On the student performance piece, it is saying that, uh, like, if you go back up to, um, to the description of the goal itself, it says that all subgroup students will not decrease below the established base, baseline and will increase. So, in that particular case, if we followed that same model, then, just using the black-white gap, the established baseline is forty-four percent, forty-four point six percent for black students, seventy-seven point four percent for white students. And as we look at the data, we can see whether or not those, um, those numbers are improving. Because the reality of it is, is, is I was playing with it. So, let's say, for example, right now, on this current chart, we started off with the white student performance for spring results in school year twenty-twenty-three at seventy-seven point four. We have a, so for the spring target, for this particular one, um, we are saying that the white student group is 79%.
So, for the spring, it was seventy-six point five.
Right, but I'm, right, I'm just going back to the original, to the, to the starting point.
Correct.
Right. So, from seventy-seven point four, right now, we have a target for the school year of twenty-four, twenty-five of 79%. So, just looking at the, that, uh, if I could forgive the usage, the white line, uh, we are saying that in whatever that is, two years, that we, we are targeting the white group to grow by, uh, what's that, 1.6?
And this is just this year, Mr. Jordan? This isn't two years?
No, no, I'm saying from spring, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, I, okay.
So, in spring, in the, when the baseline, the white student performance was at seventy-seven point four. We, but it's one year, and then twenty-four, twenty-five would be the second year. So, by the end of the second year, we are, um, uh, I don't know the right word, ambitioning towards the white student performance on STAR math proficient at or above to increase by 1.6%, if my math is correct.
Over the two years, correct.
Okay. But, let's say we were trying to push the, to see the white longitudinal growth to be at 85%. Then, that would mean that in order for the black student, for the gap, to continue to decrease, if the white performance is going up, then the black performance data is gonna have to go up even more towards trying to close the gap. So then, the conversation becomes around a couple of things. One, what is it that we must do to make sure that the white performance doesn't stay flat, relatively flat? And what is it that we have to do to see the black student performance to grow, I'm just gonna say this exponentially, in order for us, by the time we get to twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven, we feel that we have pushed both student groups to grow towards greater outcomes? And at the same time, seeing the rate of growth go for, um, for the, whatever group that may be behind in order to try to close that gap to 10%? That, to me, is a, is a, is a, is the level, is the conversation that the data could spark that would truly have the board in a position and conversation with the superintendent administration around, really tell us, and let's really have some conversations around, are the strategies and the resources aligning with the goal and the, and the reality? And then that forces, or could potentially force, when we, especially when we start talking about resources, um, if, if currently, the resources, the way we have them distributed is, you know, maybe producing some flatlining, then, you know, there may be some real recommendations that the superintendent administration would have to come back to the board and say, "We need you to make some tough decisions if you really want to accomplish goals." Because right now, whether it's human resources, or financial resources, or book resources, whatever it is, um, whatever it is that, that you feel you need in order to truly see us to the point where, um, we're gonna see both groups' progress and gaps close, that, to me, forces that courageous conversation around really telling us what you need to, to, to achieve that. And I, and that's what just kind of, like I said, came to me as I was just struggling. You know, starting when we did the, the reading one, and then looking at this one again, I couldn't find, um, that end goal target, and that's what brought me back to, to the conversation that we're having, having now. So, I, I think that's something that, you know, I would encourage the board and administration to, to review. Because even as you go, as the board is gonna go into, into the budget season, you could just take this one goal only and say, if we, if we really need to close gaps, then, these things that we've been doing with the resources that we have at our disposal, if you really gave us, you know, two and a half times that, that was just focused on trying to make sure that whatever strategies we feel we need to implement to get there, then the board and administration, the superintendent can have a real conversation around, uh, is there alignment taking place between, uh, achieving the goal and the realities that, that we, that we face?
I thought that was very well stated, and I think, yeah.
So, that's not just, I mean, everything that's there, and all the green is great. The, the, uh, ultimately, we're trying to get to the point of, what does it take to win the Super Bowl? Oh, I'm sorry. What does it take to win the, the, uh, Wimbledon? What, what does it take to win Wimbledon?
Cause, cause Tanya didn't know football, she knows tennis.
Oh. I just thought you were talking about your.
No, no, no.
I know Super.
The Dallas Cowboys.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Well, she wouldn't know, she wouldn't know Super Bowl.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the five chips. I'm just saying, for, if, if, if I am a qualifier in Wimbledon, what is it that I have to do to actually be able to win in, in three to five years? And so, the type of coaching, and resources, and practice time, and all the things that, that I would have to do if I even stood a chance of getting there, but that was the goal. It really forces a different conversation than saying, you know, "I'm winning matches, but I, but I'm not getting to the point where I can actually qualify to get into the tournament."
Is there anyone else?
So, the other, um, so we, we've talked about this in the last couple monitoring sessions, about the impact of the summer programming, and looking at those students that were in the summer programs. And, um, if you don't know how, where you are with that.
I, I don't have a final report, but we should be pretty close.
One, one other thing. So, I know we talked about, um, I don't think it impacts the, under the conversation we were having before about, um, uh, the, the state's new framework, none of it impacts this particular goal, correct? Cause we're still doing SOLs.
Cause this one, yeah, this one's just on SOL pass.
Doing SOL, still doing, um, STAR, so this, this goal isn't impacted. And then, just as a reminder, the board agreed to, um, eliminate the first goal, so it's now four goals.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
That was the only report we have for our workshop. So, we can, um, now, may I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session.
May I have a second? Please read the motion.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just sitting back down. Moved that the members of the school board of the city of Norfolk go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2 dash 3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. As amended for, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotions, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board pursuant to subsection 2.2 dash 3711A1 of the act. The subjects of this portion of the session are the discussion of personnel on today's regular personnel agenda, and the ongoing investigation and possible disciplining of a specific personnel. Discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2.2 dash 3711A2 of the act. The subject of this portion of the session is the discussion of students on today's regular student support agenda in consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2 dash 3711A7 and 8 of the act. The subjects of this portion of the session are for the legal advice concerning the provision of special education services and the matters set out above in subsections A and B, and legal advice and briefing by staff members in connection with the matters set above in subsections A and B of this motion. Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
And Buffalo?
Aye.
Take a breather. Oh, yeah, that was, that's a lot. That's a lot. We're in now and closed session.
I, I need to get my computer.
Good evening, welcome to the Norfolk School Board meeting for Wednesday, December 18th. A quorum is present to conduct the business of the school board. Ms. Tanner, please call the role.
Basine?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Martin?
Present.
Paulson?
Present.
And Buffalo?
Present. We're gonna have our student representative, Carson Rice, lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. We request that all cell phones and papers to be turned off or on vibrate during the course of this meeting. Thank you. Please rise and remain standing for the reciting of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
We're moved to 4.04, adoption of the school board meeting agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
I move that we adopt the meeting agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Um, motion by Dr. Martin, second by Mr. Paulson, any discussion?
Mrs. Moore, Buffalo?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd like to request to have, um, sorry, my computer just closed down. Um, item 5.05 on the consent agenda moved to, uh, the discussion decision portion of the agenda.
Okay, so that makes it 6.03. Ms. Tanner, please note that on the agenda. Is there any discussion?
Also, uh, item 506, the approval of minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. What did you want, what did you want done to the?
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna abstain, so you'll have to vote on it. It can't be part of the consent.
Yeah. So, we're gonna move that to 6.04.
Madam Chair, uh, just one point of clarity. I know we had a update through the personnel docket, is that, do we get that straight with the?
It's posted on board docs.
Yes, I'm hearing it's, it's been.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, now, Ms. Tanner, the, um, cellphone policy will be 6.03. Minutes will be also removed out of the consent agenda and moved to 6.04. Do I hear any discussion, or we're good? All right, so right now, the consent agenda is as it is excluding the cellphone policy and the approval of minutes. Okay?
Ready?
Yes.
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
We'll go down to 4.05, school board members' service recognition and school board clerks' report.
Chairwoman Buffalo, we are excited to recognize two of our school board members tonight who are ending their tenure as of December 31st, 2024, Dr. Noel Gabriel and Mr. Carlos Clanton. So, at this time, Chairwoman Buffalo and Superintendent Dr. Burson, will you join us at the step and repeat? And other board members, and then we'll call Mr. Clanton and Dr. Gabriel forward. Come on. Not you. Come down. You can take your last stroll to the step and repeat.
But we stay up here?
Yes. One at a time.
Okay, I get three. Okay. Suck it in.
We'll call them down separately. You'll see.
I'm scared, I don't know what y'all doing.
Good evening, everyone. Whoa. We are here to re, uh, recognition of service for Dr. Gabriel and Mr. Clanton. So, I have two proclamations in, uh, in front of me, and they read. Proclamation by the school board of the city of Norfolk in honor of Dr. Noel Gabriel. Whereas the city of the Norfolk School Board and Norfolk Public Schools recognized the numerous contributions of the school board member, Dr. Noel Gabriel, over a tenure of 12 years on the school board. And whereas, yeah, 12 years. Whereas, Dr. No, Noel Gabriel began her journey as an appointed school board member for a two-year term, 2012.
for a two-year term, 2012 to 2014, and was reappointed for another two years, 2014 to 2016. And whereas, Dr. Gabriel represented Super War VI in 2016 and again in 2020, and served in multiple roles, board member, vice chair, and chair, and always with respect and professionalism. And whereas, Dr. Gabriel had the privilege to serve on various committees, including the facilities, legislative, and hospitality committees. And whereas, Dr. Gabriel's time on the school board included the growth of her family by two more children while managing to maintain a professional career as a pediatrician with CHKD and while serving on the board of minus nine to five and the ODU College of Science Advisory Board. And whereas, the city of Norfolk School Board gratefully acknowledged her dedicated service to our schools and extend our deepest gratitude to Dr. Gabriel along with the greater Norfolk Public Schools community. Now, therefore be it resolved, on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby honors the contributions of Dr. Noel Gabriel to the Norfolk Public Schools and society as a whole. Congratulations. Please come forward, Dr. Gabriel, to receive your plaque. Beautiful. Proclamation for you. You have anything you want to say, Dr. Gabriel? Oh, you take, just go ahead. Everyone come, come in, family.
Knowing that this was going to be my last meeting, I wanted to prepare some words and I wanted to make sure that I wrote down, uh, several things that I wanted to leave with and things that I had been reflecting upon for many months now leading up to tonight. Our priest at church, Father George, uh, gave a sermon and he had said that there's a difference between pleasure and joy and being satisfied versus fulfilled. And I will tell you that this journey here as a school board member for 12 years has brought me incredible joy and much fulfillment. I actually started my journey with Norfolk Public Schools as a student at Little Creek Elementary. And, uh, someone found some artwork, believe it or not, in a hallway at City Hall in a closet that I had done as a student and they brought it over to me when I was a board member over here. And they said, look what we found in the closet. And it's hanging up in, in our, in our house right now. But the journey didn't just stop with myself, but it continued on with my mom, who ended up going back to school and getting her degree to be a teacher. She was one of those folks that got recruited to come back and teach and a math teacher at that. And she served with Norfolk Public Schools until 2012, um, when she had passed away. So I was like, oh man, no. MPS cannot be without a Gabriel. I gotta get in there. So that's when I decided to put my name in the hat to, uh, do the appointment process. Because if anybody could speak about how wonderful Norfolk Public Schools is, it could be me. Because Norfolk Public Schools gave me an incredible education, an education that cannot be even valued on the sense of a report card, but on skills that I use each and every day in the emergency room, with my patient families, with my coworkers, with my colleagues, that you, you just can't teach or read out of a book. You have to experience it. And that's why I am so proud to have all of my children here at Norfolk Public Schools. And as well as my nieces and nephews. I literally have a niece or a nephew or a child in pre-K three, all the way to, my godson graduated 12th grade last year. And I started the board when he was in kindergarten. And that's how fast it goes. That's how fast it goes. So much joy, much fulfillment. I have to give thanks to, uh, Mayor Frame and the original council members who were a part of the appointment process. They had faith in me, um, that I could come and serve the board and bring experience and knowledge and, uh, service to our division. And I am very grateful for all of them for that. Those board members included Councilman Smigel, Councilman Williams Graves, Councilman Wibley, Councilman Riddick, Councilman Winn, and then, uh, Mayor Alexander, uh, was elected. And I cannot thank him enough for being just an incredible mayor, someone that, um, I could pick up the phone and speak with and collaborate with if there was a need that our school division had, uh, or a situation that had arisen. He was a phone call away whatever I needed. And just want to say that I didn't really know who our mayor was when I was growing up as a child, but all of my kids know Mayor Alexander. They know they're council members. They know they're school board members. They know they're superintendent. And that is just wonderful for them to be able to have. And I, I know that our council right now, who I'm incredibly grateful for, um, the collaboration that we have and their support, Vice Mayor Thomas, uh, uh, Councilwoman Courtney Doyle, Councilwoman Mamie Johnson, uh, Councilwoman Andrew McLaren, and again Tommy Smigel and, uh, Councilman Page, very much appreciate the collaborative relationship that we share because we are Team Norfolk. We are the biggest budget within the city and people want quality, excellent schools when they are looking at where they want to live. And that's why it is so important for us to work well together. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Mr. Pishko and Mr. Cloud and Mr. Fox now is here, um, to help us since Mr. Cloud is away. Um, but I understand that he will be back. But, um, our relationship with the city attorneys has been excellent and they've taught me quite a bit. Uh, and I really value all the education that I have received and the assistance from them. And I have great respect for what they do and what they do for our students and our staff each and every day. I also would like to thank the voters because if they had not voted me in, I would not be here. Uh, so everyone who voted, who supported, who hosted events, made phone calls, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. And then to my family. I have a great husband. Could not do this without him. Uh, he stayed, um, so we meet the first and, uh, third Wednesday of every month. So he is cooking dinner. He is taking the kids back and forth to where they need to be. And yes, I had two other children while on the board. Ms. Christina here. She, she, um, Rodney and I, we joked that she learned her ABCs because of all the policies that we had to go through. A policy JDBD, policy ZYX this. I said, yeah, that was Christina. Um, I said, she, she can't even talk. She won't be able to say anything. And then of course, um, Basili came along. Um, and my family has been a tremendous support for me. They, they allow me to help take care of other children. And they're very patient and they have sacrificed a lot. And now they get mom back. So I'm really happy to have this transition to be with you guys because I have to drive them everywhere, my husband and I. So like, I leave this, but then I put the Uber hat on. Um, so I'm very grateful to them. And my sisters, um, my sister, my brother-in-law, my brothers, and again, my dad, um, could not do this without our village because they were watching them while I was at board meetings, while Jeff was at work. And so, uh, in order to do this public service, which was literally another full-time job if you do it well, um, they were critical to the success. And I really appreciate them because when I was at school visits, they were at Pupu's house getting watched. But transitioning over to the school visits, there is, um, a very important, uh, quote that is in, um, Greek culture, and it's by Alexander the Great. And he says, "To our parents, we owe our life. To our teachers, we owe the good life." And that tells you how elevated educators are and how important they are and the role that they play in our lives and in the lives of our children. And I would have to say that, um, over these 12 years, the meetings are great, but the school visits are everything. That's when you see the rubber meet the road. That's when you see the things that we do each and every day go into action. That's when you see the spark of enthusiasm and you hear the chorus and the band and you see them playing in PE and they tell you about their math facts. Um, and then they tell you what needs to get fixed. Or they tell you, um, "We want you to come back and do a presentation on such and such," or "Can you bring this up at a school board meeting?" And so the, the school visits are probably what I'm going to miss the most and where I felt like I probably was able to serve the best for the school division. Can't leave without, um, talking about what happened over the weekend. Um, so I'm a comet. I graduated from Granby High School. We can live, we can live harmoniously, all right? Because my children, uh, go to Maury and of course, Carlos and I, what a great year 98, right? We, we graduated the same year. He was at Maury. I was at Granby. It's a good thing he did something different and Lincoln Douglas and not debate because then, oh, we would have had real rivalry then. But, um, so, uh, the Maury football team, as everyone knows, won the state football championship, second year in a row. The band, the cheerleaders, the flag ladies, um, the dancers, the diamond dancers, right? They're amazing. Our, our division has so much to be proud of. And to be there and to be living, um, that it was just an incredible experience. And, um, it makes me so happy and grateful to be part of this MPS family. Sorry, that was more than just a few words. Um, but the school division is in good hands, Dr. Burson. Okay? And I trust you and the course that you are taking us on. And I appreciate all of your service to our students and our staff. And I have, uh, great faith in the things that will be for Norfolk Public Schools. And I thank you for your leadership.
Mr. Clanton? Proclamation by the school board of the city of Norfolk in honor of Mr. Carlos C. Clanton. Whereas the city of Nor- Norfolk City School Board and Norfolk Public Schools community honor Mr. Carlos Clanton for his eight-year tender, tenure on the school board. And whereas, Mr. Clanton was elected to the city of Norfolk School Board in May, 2018, representing War III and has utilized his platform to promote educational access, accountability, and community engagement. And whereas, his commitment to education is rooted in his strong family background, coupled with the guidance of supportive mentors and educators and future and further strengthened by his experience serving as a Norfolk Public Schools administrator. And whereas, throughout his tenure on the Norfolk School Board, Mr. Clanton has taken on various leadership roles, including chairman, vice chairman, co-chairman of the Legislative Av- Advocacy Committee, and co-chair of the School Facilities and Construction Committee. And whereas, Mr. Clanton has made significant contributions to regional and national organizations, serving as a chairman of the Virginia Governor's School for the Arts Regional Board and a member of the CSEP Regional Governance Board. He has been honored with numerous awards, including the prestigious Virginia School Board Association, VSB, School Board Member Achievement Award, which recognized his exceptional leadership and dedication to public education. And whereas, the Norfolk City School Board gratefully acknowledged his dedicated career to serving in our schools and the greater Norfolk Public Schools community. Now, therefore be it resolved, on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby honors the service and contributions of Mr. Carlos Clanton to the Norfolk Public Schools and this society as a whole. Congratulations, Mr. Clanton.
I wasn't like Noel. Didn't have anything prepared on that one. Um, I knew that this meeting was coming. I, I guess I'll just say in this respect, um, there's an old Negro spiritual that says, let the works that I've done speak for me. Um, and so many of you kind of heard some of the things that were there. Norfolk Public Schools has been and has been a great part of my professional career, my life. Um, I grew up through our schools, uh, Archmont, Taylor, Blair, Maury, and the Governor's School. I think it's probably one of the highlights of my life, um, to be the first in the history of the school, um, to be an alum and then to come back and to serve on the board. Um, and to be able to relate with those students, um, who had walked those halls and, and then to become chairman of the Governor's School Board. Um, and, um, what I've learned here, um, not just as a miniature or a school board member, um, but from each and every one of you all as, uh, colleagues on this board. Um, we don't always agree, and I think that we've come a long way. And what has taught me in that respect is to be able to, uh, disagree, but not be disagreeable, um, to find the things that, um, we can find connection on, um, and to work each and every day, um, to do what's in the best interest. Um, we all have our own lens and eyes, um, on what we see of our perspective. Um, and I've come to respect each and every one of you. And I'd always agree, but I think, um, I know that I've come to respect each and every one of you. Um, and so I appreciate, um, being able to serve alongside you all and look forward to continue to work with you, um, in a new capacity in this city. Um, to the administrators that are in this room, um, I know the hard work that you all go through each and every day because I've been on the other side. I know the long nights that you have to sit in here and preparing reports. And when the board has some new idea or a new report and information that you got to get that done. And I always keep that in my, my mindset. And for the teachers that are present in this room, um, whether or not you're a teacher, a butt driver, um, a paraprofessional, um, each and every one of you play a critical role in making sure that our students have what they need, um, in, in our school. And so I appreciate you all. Um, and so just as much as this really nice, um, I'm, y'all should have seen, uh, Tiffany in the background. She said, y'all can't wait. But I just want to say thank you. And I look forward to, uh, continuing to serve the citizens of Norfolk. And I appreciate the voters who elected me back in 2018. You know, I'll just share this. I've often have shared in that respect that, um, my mother was the one who, um, encouraged me. Um, my last conversation before my mo- mother passed away was just simply this, "I guess you could say Nike, just do it." Um, and she had, she told me, um, to go run. Um, she says, "You have so much to give to, to the people of Norfolk." And so I did it. I took that leap of faith and anybody who gets out there to run, um, and put yourself before the public, um, it's a courageous act in itself. And we've all been up And we've all been up here and done that of the time that gave away from that. And so I appreciate the citizens of Norfolk and of Ward Three and, and of Super Ward Seven, and as we continue to move forward. But just know that in a new capacity, I will continue to be a champion for public, quality public education in our city. And I look forward to working with you, Dr. Birdsong, and the members of the school board to build a stronger relationship between the council and this school board and moving forward for all of our citizens and for our youngest, our new leaders within our city. So with that, I say thank you all for this great honor and I look forward to continuing to serve in you. Thank you.
Did you get a picture of them?
Can we get a picture of the full board?
Jeff is bringing it.
We gotta do sides.
One, two, three.
Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the school board, community members, and staff. As a point of privilege, I would like the opportunity to share some brief thoughts following the presentation of resolutions for Dr. Noel Gabriel and Mr. Carlos Clanton. I have had the distinct honor and privilege of working for, and most importantly, working with Dr. Noel Gabriel and Mr. Carlos Clanton for several years now. First, as a member of the division's executive leadership team, later as the acting superintendent of schools, and finally as the division superintendent, beginning February 19th, 2020, just a couple of weeks before the pandemic. I absolutely marvel at their individual contributions and their collective commitment to the thousands of children who walk through the doors of Norfolk Public Schools on a daily basis. Dr. Gabriel is retiring from the school board after 12 years of service. She was initially appointed by the Norfolk City Council to serve in 2012, as we just heard. And subsequently, she was elected by a grateful, and I mean grateful, public who recognized her extraordinary leadership qualities. Yes, Dr. Gabriel has many fine qualities that made her a stellar board member. She is quite intelligent and she is incisive and eager to collaborate for the greater good. Yet when I think of her, I believe her most outstanding quality is perseverance. The Good Book has this to say about the persevering spirit. "And let us not grow weary of doing good. For in due season, we will reap, we will reap. If we do not give up, thank you for not ever giving up." That statement so vividly portrays what Dr. Gabriel is all about. No matter how tough the myriad challenges we faced, Dr. Gabriel never succumbed to resignation. Instead, she consistently, and I do mean consistently, took responsibility for helping to devise solutions. I thank you, Dr. Gabriel. When I think of Carlos Clanton's six years of service on the school board, I am thankful for his thoughtful, probing nature and his drive to take action. And as we say in Norfolk Public Schools, no matter what. A well-known civil rights activist and brother of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, W E B Du Bois, once said, "Now is the accepted time, not tomorrow, not some convenient season. It is today. It's today that our best work can be done and not some future day or future year." Mr. Clanton's commitment to taking firm steps toward achieving strategic, high-level goals rather than getting lost in the details and not rushing to judgment, that was a breath of fresh air to a sometimes extremely weary administration. Thankfully, he will continue to be an advocate for public education, specifically for Norfolk Public Schools, right? And his new role as a member of the Norfolk City Council. Again, congratulations on your new role, Mr. Clanton. As we are now well poised to say a heartfelt goodbye to these excellent public servants, let's not forget the evidence of those persevering and thoughtful qualities. They helped lead the school division through a devastating pandemic, ensured that salaries and benefits for employees were solid and competitive in nature, strongly advocated for funding to support improvements for the division's aging infrastructure. And most importantly, they stood up for equity. So it wasn't just a byword, but a hallmark of this school division. From increased social emotional programs for our children, to more outreaches for our English learners and our students with disabilities, to improved gifted education services. Truly, Dr. Noel Gabriel and Mr. Carlos Clanton have made profound contributions that have served all students admirably. And for that, I will forever be grateful. So thank you for allowing, allowing me this time to express my appreciation. We will miss you both and thank you for your service.
And so noted, Mr. Jordan will be leaving us as well. And don't, don't send me no emails. Don't come for me. Mr. Jordan will be recognized at our January business meeting. All right, we're going to move on to 4.06 Superintendent's Report.
Evening again, Chair Buffalo, Dr. Martin. I said that. I'm so sorry. So sorry. Need to say that one more time. Let me get it right. Vice Chair, Dr. Gabriel, members of our community and staff. Prior to showing, the showing of my video report, we have a special presentation this evening honoring Booker T. Washington High School. Here to present this honor this evening is Dr. Myra Sawyers, who serves as the Virginia State Director for Cognia. Dr. Sawyers has been an educator in Virginia for over 30 years. In her role as director, she serves over 400 private and public schools throughout the state. Cognia, Cognia has been accrediting schools in Virginia for 130 years. They are a globally recognized, a globally recognized nonprofit organization, leading in serving schools and accreditation and meeting the highest standards in education. They serve over 40,000 schools and divisions in 90 countries, focusing on improving education opportunities for all students. So at this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Sawyers to the podium, please.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good evening, members of the school board, honored guests, and the Norfolk community. I am Dr. Myra Sawyers, State Director of Cognia. It is an honor and a pleasure to be here with you this evening to recognize Booker T. Washington High School in achieving 100 years of accreditation with Cognia. We applaud and celebrate your years of commitment to your students, to your community, and to continuous improvement. Accreditation from Cognia is a valuable mark of distinction, recognized around the world. Fewer than 30 schools have received this distinction. Booker T. Washington is a historically significant school in Virginia. This recognition honors your great history and your namesake in continuing to demonstrate an unwavering commitment to meeting the highest standards in education and striving to help all students reach their fullest potential. Expectations, standards, and practices have certainly changed in the last 100 years. But what hasn't changed is the dedication of your community to educators to meet the many challenges along the way. We commend your leadership, faculty, staff, and educators who share in this commitment, in this achievement. You have Cognia's best interests and best wishes for the continued vitality of your institution and for many more years of dedicated and meaningful service to students and families. Celebrate this accomplishment far and wide. It is truly something to be very proud of. Our Cognia team is deeply honored to have been part of your improvement journey and will continue to work together for future success so all students of Norfolk Public Schools will thrive. So on behalf of Cognia, please accept the banner and the framed certificate commemorating this achievement.
Dr. Sawyers at the podium is Principal Dion Garner of Booker T. Washington High School.
Thank you very much.
I had, we have so many things to share with you this evening in our video. And I think it was Dr. Gabriel who stole, stole a little bit of our thunder about the Maury High School win, second year in a row, state championships. Had a wonderful time. I believe it was probably 25 degrees outside, but we didn't feel it at all. We were too busy clapping and cheering the team on. So let's roll the video.
Norfolk Sister City Association brought the culture of Timbukana to sixth graders at the Academy of International Studies at Rosemont.
Today we came to enrich, enhance, and, and help the children expand their knowledge of cultural Ghana. I think it's always great for children to learn about different cultures. It's important that they do understand and appreciate other cultures and other people so that they could be better citizens for this United States.
I am here in a teaching capacity and sharing Jimbe life with the students here at Rosemont. I think it's nice to get to swap cultures and if you can't get out of the country, you can, somebody can come in the country and share some ideas with you.
It's cool to see how other cultures dance and how is their tradition and stuff. It was all just really gripping and new for me and I really liked it.
I think the food, it was really, really good. And the culture and the artifacts too, those were pretty cool. It's really amazing because not all middle schools can do this. It makes me feel good that all of us are learning about new cultures and all of that.
This is the culminating presentation of our project called Rhyme: Reading in Music Education. This first series is based on the story of Pinocchio, the rights and wrongs that we do in society and how we overcome our mistakes.
Each third grade student was given a book published by the tide water winds. In their classrooms, students read and completed writing activities about the story, which complimented what they saw on stage.
So literacy is our rock in Norfolk Public Schools. So any opportunity that we can have to enhance that experience for them and allow all of our students to see themselves as readers, I think this really brought that alive for them.
It's not just for the art. It's not. It's for the message and it's for the reading, the reading comprehension, to instill a love of reading in our students.
The NPS School-to-School Attendance Challenge is in full swing. Across the division, schools are bringing creativity and enthusiasm to the forefront as they compete to highlight the importance of being present, on time, and ready to learn each day. This friendly competition underscores a vital message. When students miss school, they miss out. Chronic absenteeism, missing 10% or more of school days for any reason, has a significant impact on learning. We're proud to share that your efforts are making a difference. Norfolk Public Schools has seen a steady decline in chronic absenteeism, dropping from 24.3% in 2122 to 16.8% in 2324. This progress is a testament to the commitment of our families, educators, and community. Each month, as part of the School-to-School Attendance Challenge, NPS recognizes the schools that are leading the way in combating chronic absenteeism. Congratulations to the following schools for having the best attendance and for earning the most improved attendance for the months of August through November. Keep up the great work.
Congrats to the Granby High Boys Volleyball Team for a successful and historic season. The Comets set a record for most wins in a season as they made it all the way to the state semifinals for the first time.
We have a great group of guys, caring guys, athletic, willing to play their hardest whenever they can.
They just never give up. I think they just like to give me a headache and scare me a little bit. But they always have that, you know, never quit mentality.
This team also took home top individual honors as Michelle Neves was named Regional Coach of the Year and A.J. Angelus was named Regional Player of the Year for a second time. In conjunction with college football's National Signing Day, six football players from Maury High announced and signed where they will continue their academic and athletic careers. School personnel, family, friends, and teammates were on hand to see the culmination of years of hard work.
It's a blessing, you know? Most of us play Little League together, so like it's really a blessing for us, most of us to be signing today.
This is what the bigger cause is, you know, putting these guys in this position or helping them get in this position. These guys do their job in, in a classroom academically, then they come out there and put on a performance on the football field. So you put the two together and you have good character, this is kind of, this is what happens with that. So I love it.
Another round of Rockstar Awards went out. Administrators visited schools throughout the division to present outstanding teachers with Rockstar Awards. This award recognizes exceptional teachers for excellent attendance or reaching at least 95% student participation on their Star Literacy Assessments. Both teachers and their students were surprised and grateful for the recognition.
It felt so amazing. I was caught by such a surprise. It was super exciting. It definitely made my morning. So proud that all of our hard work did not go unnoticed. They've worked really, really hard and I'm just so glad that it shows through their scores and results.
I'm kind of shocked right now because I don't pay attention to that kind of stuff. So I'm really shocked.
So proud of them. We work hard every day and so I'm so glad that they are achieving.
Royster Presbyterian Church welcomed students with exceptional needs from Lake Taylor High School to their kitchen to teach them how to prepare a Thanksgiving dinner. Volunteers from the church assisted students with everything from preparing the food to cleaning up afterwards. This was the culminating activity for a five-week course. And these delighted students received certificates while waiting for their meal to cook.
So this is for our self-contained students and it's helping to develop their independent living skills and their employment skills at the same time because they're not only cooking for themselves today, but they're also cooking for another group that will get this meal later on this afternoon.
It is important for the young people to learn to cook. Food is a real problem in our community and in others. And learning how to cook is, and it enables people to learn how to provide for themselves in a way that is cheaper than the pre-made stuff at the grocery store. It also teaches them how much fun it is.
They're excited and what I like about it, they have a teachable spirit. If they don't understand, they asked and they'll tell you what they like the best. And this is what it's all about, seeing the human side of us.
Because I like it. I like it and it's great. It made me feel good. Makes me feel healthy.
Makes me feel healthy and strong, you know? I like cooking with all my classmates and stuff. I just like it and I think it's fantastic and I love my classmates. They love me and I like doing all certain stuff and I'm enjoying it.
With the upcoming General Assembly Session quickly approaching, Norfolk Public Schools invited legislators, principals, and the community to learn about their priorities during their annual Take Your Legislator to School Day.
It's a wonderful opportunity that must, must continue and have that opportunity repeated just as often as we possibly can.
It's always good to come before our school board members and our legislative leaders and know that Norfolk is a priority for them and that they're willing to fight for what students and our staff need. So to be reaffirmed that our priorities are their priorities, that's what I learned and that's what I appreciated.
Following the meeting about legislative goals, the delegates had the opportunity to visit schools and see up close what the day-to-day operation looks like.
I think it was important to participate today because you see firsthand what's going on in our schools, you know, senior teachers and what they're dealing with and all the issues and really not only issues, but successes they have here. So it was great to see and have a firsthand in-person experience here at Lennywood Elementary School.
Delegate Benita Anthony not only got to visit Maury High School's staff and students to learn more about their needs, but she also had the honor of presenting three resolutions to the football team and the career and technical education program.
It was just a joy to be able to present the committing resolutions here at Maury High School. I mean, it's great. It's always good that they connect with folks that are making decisions, just help to reiterate what are the needs and to really drill down what are the issues within school districts.
Congratulations to Norview grad Jordan Lee on being elected as Vice President of the freshman class at Morehouse College. Back to back, that's what the Maury Commodores did as they won their second consecutive state title with a 46-0 victory over Briar Woods on the campus of James Madison University. Spurred on by great traveling crowd support and the high-energy cheerleading squad, the Commodores jumped out to a 14-0 lead and never looked back. They finished the season undefeated at 15-0.
Just thinking about my senior year, stuck it out, stayed here, um, went through the battles, went through the, went through the hard times. Um, and we're not the program where y'all went out the senior class, man. The guys sticking it out, they're just dealing with what it takes to do this year in and year out. So I'm proud of them. Um, I'm happy for them, man. Like, I just keep thinking about them, man. I'm happy for our kids, man. I'm happy for our coaches.
January 1st.
Bell to bell.
No cell.
January 1st.
Bell to bell.
No cell.
Hello, I'm Dr. Mike Cataldo from the Office of Student Support, Safety, and Information. In accordance with Governor Youngkin's Executive Order 33, Norfolk Public Schools is developing a new cellphone policy that will prohibit the use of personal electronic devices from bell to bell, which prohibits usage during the instructional day. This means no cell phones, personal electronic devices will be permitted during the school day, including lunch or between classes. Students will be expected to power off their devices and place them in their bag or backpack before entering school. Devices cannot be in students' pockets, purses, hands, or on their desks. A personal electronic device is considered any personal device capable of making calls, transmitting pictures or video, and sending messages through electronic news. We appreciate your support as we make this important change to enhance student learning.
January 1st.
Bell to bell.
No cell.
Put your cell phones.
And personal electronic devices away.
Until the end of the school day.
January 1st.
Bell to bell, no cell.
For complete video stories and more division-wide information about Norfolk Public Schools, visit the NPS website and check out our YouTube channel, Facebook page, Instagram app, and the NPS newsletter.
With Dr. Cataldo that he cannot even think about another career. That concludes my video report. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you for that. We're going to move on to 4.07, Citizen Comments. Ms. Tanner?
Madam Chairwoman, for today's Citizens Comments, we have six speakers. Today's speakers signed up for public comments before the start of today's business meeting. If you would like to provide public comments, you are required to state the agenda items or topic you are addressing prior to providing your public comments at this meeting. When your name is called, please come forward to the speaker's podium, state your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you are employed by the district, and state your agenda items or item. One person is to speak at a time. If you are representing a group, state the group's name. You may ask your group members to stand in place to be recognized. Speaking time is limited to three minutes. A timer is set with an alarm that will signify the end of your speaking time. State your position, relevant facts, and other data, avoiding saying anything that identifies students or personnel information about individual employees. Personnel, disciplinary, and confidential matters may be addressed directly to the school board via email at schoolboard@npsk12.com. Comments should be addressed to the board and not addressed to an individual member. School board members do not respond to public comments at the time they are given, and any written statements or supporting materials should be given to the clerk. Chairwoman Buffalo, our first speaker for day is Charlotte Smith Warley, followed by
Welcome. Thank you. Chair of Buffalo, Vice Chair Gabriel, school board members, and Dr. Birdsong. My name is Charlotte Smith Warley. I do not have children in Norfolk Schools. I am here tonight for a different reason than I have been in the past. I want to say a heartfelt thank you to two individuals who undoubtedly have been the board's finest example for astute, unselfish public service, Dr. Noel Gabriel and Carlos Clanton. Dr. Gabriel's responsiveness will be missed. She has an earnest desire to connect with the stakeholders she serves. I have watched countless school board meetings over the year, and I was always impressed how she could take a complex subject and boil it down to its real meaning. I counted on her to, for cutting through the verbal clutter to hone in on what was best for our children. On more than one occasion, I sat at home watching a board meeting and found myself sighing in relief when she spoke such common sense. I would smile, shake my head, and say something like, "Thank God for Noel Gabriel." She has good sense, a big heart, and the right motivation. As for Mr. Clanton, I was likewise impressed with his incisiveness. I could count on, on, count on him to ask the right question, often the very question I was probably shouting at the TV. He came across as reflective but not indecisive. While he could be very congenial, he was never a pushover. I admired how quick he was to stand up for what he perceived as the route most likely to ensure equality for students and staff. I am thankful he is not leaving public service because we need his grit. President Hoover once said, "Being a politician is a poor profession. Being a public servant is a noble one." So thank you, Dr. Gabriel and Mr. Clanton, for choosing to be true public servants. I appreciate how they both put all the children of NPS first, never pushing their personal agendas to divide the board, and never failed to do what was best for our children. You have set excellent examples for new school board members who will follow you. My prayer is that they will take those examples to heart. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chairman Buffalo, school board members, and Dr. Birdsong. My name is Liz Albert. I do not have children in public schools. However, I am a longtime advocate for this city's increased investment in public education. I come to you tonight with a grateful frame of mind. I am thankful for the contributions of two departing school board members, Dr. Noel Gabriel and Mr. Carlos Clanton, who over their years of service have remained powerful voices for the needs of children. I marvel at Dr. Gabriel's commitment to children. As a pediatrician in a busy emergency room, she deals regularly with trauma and pressing need. As the mother of four schoolchildren, she must be their guide and example. Yet no matter how busy her professional and personal life may have been, she always came to a board meeting well-prepared, intent on shaving just the right response to the issues of the day. She is a picture of grace under pressure, for there were times over her 12 years of service that she became a target for the people who were supposed to be working with her for the benefit of children. Yet, I do not recall one time where she showed public bitterness or spite. She refused to play politics. Instead, she pushed on and kept working for the best outcomes for students and stakeholders. Also, I salute Mr. Clanton for his intelligent analysis of any issue the school board was studying at the time. He is an articulate advocate who was able to spell out the challenges and impacts of any changes in a thoughtful manner. While watching school board meetings, I always listened carefully when he talked because he did not talk for talking sake alone. His comments were always significant and thought-provoking. As a resident of Super Ward 7, I am thankful he will be serving on city council. Dr. Gabriel and Mr. Clanton, thank you for your service. In my view, you are absolutely the best part of the Norfolk School Board. If the new members coming aboard are astute, they will capitalize on your collective legacy. I pray that will be the case. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Calvin Williams, followed by Amanda Keating.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Norfolk School Board members and everyone in attendance today. My name is Calvin Williams. My allergies messing with me right now.
Mr. Calvin, the mic's to you. You won't have to lean over so much. Yeah.
I'd like for y'all to imagine for a moment what it's like to be a child standing at a bus stop, unsure if today would be the, the day that you encounter violence, bullying, or worse. Picture the fear of a parent, heart. They send their children off to school hoping they make it home, they make it back safely. And the reality, this is the reality far too much inside Norfolk families these days. My 2K Foundation, we couldn't stand by and let fear dictate the lives of our children. That's why for the last past three school years, we have, we have stood at the bus stops, at those schools crossings, in front of your schools, not just as protectors, but as mentors, mediators, and advocates for peace. We de-escalated conflicts before they turned into violence. We stepped in fights, stepped in front of fights and stopped fights and prevented bullying, deterred those who had harmed, intended harm, such as, you know, we understand that it had been, it was, we started because there was a lot of shooting at the bus stops. And basically, we've been working on it. I can safely say that it hasn't been a shooting at the bus stops since we've been involved. This isn't just work for us. It's a calling, a calling that we have saved our lives and to save lives. It's a calling that has given hundreds of children the chance to feel safe in spaces that, that where safe shouldn't have ever been a question. But the reality is the challenges that are growing. The threats are escalating from children trafficking, the shootings, from bullying to traffic, accidents of school crossings, the risk of, a lot of real things happening inside the community. And we have took on the challenges every, every single day, rain, sleet, or snow, we can find inside the community, making sure that them children are safe getting off them buses and through the byways and highways, we make sure they navigate safely home to the, to the respective houses. We're not just a compliment to the school system, we are filling the gaps that cannot afford to be remain empty. Today, I'm here to ask for you, the school board, the school system, to pick up the fight with us. My 2K Foundation cannot do this alone. It's, to truly protect our children and ensure their safety, we need the Norfolk School Board to stand up as official partners with us. We need y'all's support to be women and the fathers of this community, to expand our work and to create a legacy of safety for generations to come. By incorporating My 2K Foundation...
Calvin, your time has expired. And if you have it in writing, feel free to email that to us. We appreciate it.
I will bless they. Thank y'all.
Amanda Keating.
My name is Amanda Keating. I am a high school French teacher in Norfolk Public Schools and teach locally as an adjunct professor. Despite the varying views and opinions on education, as a first-generation college student, I was grateful to have a steady income and happily worked for varying school districts over the last eight, almost nine years. This is my sixth year working for the district. This academic school year, my rose-colored glasses were lifted when I asked for help regarding a matter of safety within my school. I've been told that people often get involved with an issue when it affects them personally. And sadly, once my livelihood and reputation were threatened, I took off my figurative glasses of ignorance, requested accountability and support, only to then realize that I had stepped into a political world of chess I was not prepared for. Tonight, the debate is over Governor Youngkin's Executive Order 33, Cellphone-Free Education Policy, that will go into effect early 2025. Last night, Channel 3's Leondra Hedges shared different community members' opinions. However, it was interesting to me that no teachers' opinions were shared. Then I remembered why. Many staff members are silent, fear of retaliation, the NPS policy about speaking to the media, and an overall plague of neutrality and apathy affecting educators nationwide. As an educator, I agree with the belief that cellphones are a distraction. They, however, are also a tool. Students, you'll be okay without your phones, I promise. However, I do hope that exceptions for cellphone use will be made at times. Neurological brain breaks for one, or translation devices for English language learners. To the parents who are worried about their children's safety, when was the last time you were inside the school? Schools should be safe places for teaching and learning, but it takes a community effort, and often, when the cat is away, the mice will play. To all community members, please volunteer in the schools. Please show up. Students can exaggerate, but there's often some truth to what they say is happening in their school. Do not leave them in unsafe places and then later be outraged when something goes wrong. Teachers are not babysitters, we are educators, and it takes a village to raise a child. A respected recently-retired teacher from NPS said to me recently, "Admin in general takes sides with the students and leaves teachers to give up, and then they wonder why teachers are leaving." When I first moved here in the early 80s, NPS was unrivaled. Virginia Beach was almost as good. Chesapeake was struggling. To all, our tax money is being used this very minute. Let's be better stewards over our money and hold NPS accountable for providing a safe environment for teaching and learning. However, community members need to be equal participants in the school, and when something goes wrong, we should stop pointing the finger of blame when we ourselves could have done more in the first place. To end, join us in pushing for policies that protect faculty members' rights and ensure school leaders are accountable so our schools are safe, respectable places for both students and staff. Like what happened in Newport News, a teacher shouldn't have to sue their school district to be protected and inspire policy change. There's a mass exodus of teachers and school personnel. Bring them back. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Lisa Walker, followed by Nathan Whit, Whitlow.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you. Good evening to the board, Dr. Birdsong, and all in attendance. My name is Lisa Walker, and I'm the reading specialist at Southside STEM Academy at Campus Stella. As we close out 2024, I want to share with the board that your words really do matter. Do you really understand that this school year has brought us new standards in English? We have written thousands of student reading plans. We adopted a... We adopted a new K-2 curriculum. A handwriting curriculum has been implemented. We have created intervention schedules that require a level of planning close to sending a rocket to Mars. Additionally, we must progress monitor the implementation of each. The central administrative team has kept me grounded and supported. I just want you to realize that helping your staff is urgent, and that is what matters. Then a declaration was made that the kids just can't read. Thirty-two percent of 4th graders and 31% of 8th graders were proficient readers. That's a very small number. The NPS literacy plan addresses this emergency with conciseness, clarity of thought, and the action steps to match. Additionally, you have a quarterly data discussion with colored graphs for Board Goes 2, 3, and 4. Your words speak volumes. I listen to understand the non-negotiables and goals, and I want you to consider a couple of things as we move into the new year. All goals should be reworked to align with the Virginia School Performance and Support Framework. Additionally, without highly qualified teachers, the goals and non-negotiables are unsustainable and most likely unreachable, and they directly impact non-negotiables 1 through 3 for our superintendent. I'm very proud of the work that is happening in NPS. I deem it a privilege to serve. I just want us to remember that we need each other to accomplish the mission of being the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community with highly qualified teachers and staff dedicated to providing a variety of teaching and learning opportunities for all of our students. I wish each of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you for your comments.
Nathan Whitlow.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Ms. Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Noel Gabriel, and school board members, and Dr. Burzong and other attendees. I am Dr. Nathan Whitlow. I am the Chair of your Special Education Advisory Committee. I am here at the direction of the committee to share some of our concerns about priorities for students with disabilities as we approach next fiscal year and start considering budgeting process. To that end, we'd like to commend Dr. Walter and the Special Education and Learning Support Staff for the excellent work they do. They're always doing a great job in supporting our students with disabilities, and we really appreciate all of their work. However, we know that one of the challenges that is faced is the teacher and staffing shortages that continue to be a problem, and that we think is a significant and immediate concern for our students with disabilities. To that end, we recommend, as you approach these conversations, that you consider improved compensation for teachers and staff who work with students with disabilities to include salary stipends, access to tuition assistance, and reimbursement for exam licensing, things like that. Also, we ask that you consider dedicated funding allocations specifically towards faculty development for our teachers and staff who support students with disabilities. And we ask that you consider investment in programs to assess the work climate and retention concerns that may exist within our schools so that we can try to maintain the educators that we have. We, you know, have students out there that may have disruption in the education that they're receiving, if they have staff or teachers leaving in the middle of school year, and they're dealing with temporary staff for half the school year, and then their parents are sitting there at an IEP meeting talking about how they're failing to meet curriculum or failing to meet IEP goals. And you have, they have to be sitting there thinking, you know, has the school system failed my student because they can't provide the resources that they need? So, we just ask you to consider that as you move forward. And we invite you to continue collaborating with us. Our next CAC meeting will be at Grand B High School on Thursday, February 6. So, we'd be happy to see anybody from the school board there in attendance and join us in our discussions. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Chairwoman Buffalo, this concludes our speakers for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. We're going to move on to 4.08, approval of the consent agenda. And remember, the cellphone policy amendments have been removed. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
And Buffalo?
Aye. We're going to move on to 6.01, monthly financial report. Dr. Burzong.
Good evening again, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, staff, and community. Cheryl Spivey, our CFO, will present our monthly financial report.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll be reviewing our November monthly financial report. And Ms. Tanner, if you can get it where primarily the numbers show, that would be great. So, this is our financial highlights page. The November report covers five months for the fiscal year that started July 1, 2024. The report reflects transactions that were recorded on or before December 5. As shown on the financial highlights page, general fund collections for the first five months totaled 187,000... 87.1 million, or 40.1% of the general fund budget. Collections during the same period in the two previous years ranged between 35.9 and 36.6%. As with prior years, collections are based on cash collected during the period. As shown on the next to the last line, by the end of November, we spent or encumbered 170.1 million, or 36.4% of the budget. During the two previous years, spending through November ranged between 32.4% and 35.7%. As shown on the bottom line of the statement, actual revenue collections at this point in the year are $17.2 million greater than expenditures and encumbrances. Note that encumbrances are obligated but are not yet payable. There are other pages in the report that are available for more specific and drilled-down information. And Chair Buffalo, that is the end of my report, and I'll accept any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Spivey. School board members, you've heard the report. Does anyone have any questions? Well, thank you, Ms. Spivey. I'm sorry, Ms. Basine?
Sorry, it's getting to my page. Thank you, Ms. Spivey. I had, so the last couple, I just wanted to know if you had an update on the estimates for the revenue-sharing formula? And if you could also remind us again what the amount of the reversion funds are for SY school year '24?
We do not yet have an estimate for either one, either the school funding formula results, which we expect to receive from the city shortly.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basine. Anyone else? Mr. Jordan?
Just one point of clarification. On the chart with the revenues over expenditures, that includes the, where you have the reversion from fiscal year 2023 as part of those revenues, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Spivey.
I believe that we approve the financial report subject to audit.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. May I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Gabriel, motion. Mr. Clanton, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
And Buffalo?
Aye. We're going to move on to 6.02, school board legislative priorities. Board members, you were, you receive a presentation at the work session. I'm going to ask for a motion, if on the floor, to approve this.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the school board legislative priorities for 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, just one. There's some minor typos in here, and I just think we need to make sure they get cleared up before we publish them and take them to Richmond.
Noted, Mr. Jordan. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
And Buffalo?
Aye. We're going to move on to 6.03, policy JXXZ, personal electronic communication device cellphone policy. Board members, you have the policy in your packet. May I have a motion to approve this policy?
I move to approve policy JXXZ, personal electronic communication device cellphone policy.
May I have a... Mr. Clanton, second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Though I am seconding this motion, and I believe that we've got to move forward with it, in conversation with the community and from community members, myself, and y'all have seen or hear me every once in a while when I beep, when my blood sugar is too high or too low. But my blood sugar monitor is connected to my phone. And so, one of the concerns that I have and that we'll continue to look at is for medical devices. I know that many of our students may be in situations where they need their, it's connected to their phone, that device. And so, even though we're adopting this here, I hope that we'll look at that in some type of regulation around medical devices that might be needed at that particular point where it can still be in their backpack, but be able to be on so that they can receive, you know, needed medical attention.
Point taken, Mr. Clanton. Any other discussion? Ms. Basine?
Thank you. While I understand that this policy, while we've had a cellphone policy in place, and this policy has been revised to reflect Executive Order 33, I do want to share that at this time, while I completely recognize and understand and support the impact that social media, the negative impact that social media can have on e-student's mental health, I also know that our cell phones and devices are also tools, educational tools for our students. And one of the things that I have heard a lot from students is that how they use their phones in our school buildings for educational purposes. And I think that that is something that we really need to consider and shore up in our school buildings to make sure that they still have access to technology, because we are, it is 2024. Technology isn't going away, and I think digital literacy is important. I think we have e-textbooks. We have, today, I even heard a concern about how music is also shared. They have, they're learning music using their iPads and don't have actual physical music. So, I think there's lots to be considered before we put this policy in place. So, at this time, I am not ready to support a full cellphone, bell-to-bell cellphone ban. So, that's where I stand.
Note taken. Thank you for your comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Jordan?
So, first, I'd just like to thank the administration for hearing the concerns at the work session and updating the regulations, moving the staggards into the regulations, and also identifying the consequences of policy violations. I appreciate the warning system that exists, the notification of the potential for confiscation of device. Nothing in those first four offenses dealing with suspensions or expulsions or any of the type of punitive measures that could result in lost instructional time. I do think it's important that, as we continue to share this, that those policy violation consequences are not only communicated, but adhered to, to the greatest extent as possible, equally across every school, so that we don't have situations where some schools are enforcement one way or other schools are enforcement another way. I saw my younger daughter a couple weeks ago, and I remember when she was in the IB program that getting called down to the office one day because of something she had done. And the response that I got back from the folks I were talking to at the school was, "Well, they're IB kids. They deserve a break." And I had to say back to the person, "It didn't matter if my child was an IB kid or not. I felt like they should be held to the same standards as all other students." And so, I want to make sure that when we are implementing this, that we are implementing it fairly and equally. And I'd also just like to re-echo the concerns that I think all my colleagues have brought up during the work session that Ms. Basine just reemphasized. Having that technology infrastructure and making sure that the students have the devices that they need is extremely important. I imagine there may be some hiccups, you know, come January, but just like to encourage the upcoming board and for the superintendent administration to do whatever is necessary to prioritize to make sure that our students are not missing instructional time due to lack of devices or lack of bandwidth or any other technology impediment. So, I just wanted to, again, acknowledge and thank you for what you've propagated in the regulations and for identifying a series of consequences so that not only that the students know and the parents know, but also the teachers and administrators know that there is an effort to make sure that there are processes to hold everyone accountable for the policy as is being implemented at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Jordan. Hearing no more discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Nay.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye. We'll move down to 6.04, approval of minutes from November 6 and November 13. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Paulson?
I abstain.
And Buffalo?
I was not present.
Okay. And Buffalo?
Aye. Well, school board members, we are at the end of our agenda. But before we leave, I would like to give our student representative a moment to share any comments she would like to share this evening.
I think the cellphone policy is very controversial for students this year. It came in a little bit unannounced, and some students are coming up to me and saying, "Why do we have cellphone policy this year?" And actually, implementation is very difficult for teachers and staff members at high schools, elementaries, and middle schools. I think we need to examine how implementation is followed through because, as mentioned, often rules are said but not followed throughout. There also needs to be an emphasis on actually providing technology throughout the district. If we are taking away cell phones, then we need to provide computers throughout the classrooms so that students are able to actually use devices throughout, because often, there's trouble with actually having workable devices to supply all students in the classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Rice.
classrooms so that students are able to actually use devices throughout, because often, there's trouble with actually having workable devices to supply all students in the classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. It's always important to get our students' perspective. We appreciate your voice on this board. Thank you. So, with no other business, I have to say, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, it's been real. Appreciate serving with you all, and like you said before, we all have come from different lens, different perspectives, but all in all, we want to do what's best for our students and staff. So, with no other business, this meeting is adjourned.